Thank you for being with us tonight. This meeting has been brought to you in part by...
Let Grand Forks International Airport help you start your next vacation off on the right foot. Grand Forks International Airport offers flights to the sunny destinations of Orlando, Las Vegas, and Phoenix on Allegiant, and connections anywhere in the world through Minneapolis-St. Paul on Delta. Forget the hassle of long drives, parking nightmares, and stressful check-ins. The convenience of flying locally means less headaches and more time for you. Grand Forks International Airport, your airport, simply grand.
Know what's in this box? Well, in case your crystal ball is broken, here's a hint. Safe, reliable energy, for starters, but there's also a commitment to this community. See, at Excel Energy, this is our hometown. So we're not just about making a living here, we're about living here. Oh, I wish I had wings.
In our community, we're always delivering. Excel Energy, responsible by nature. Grand Forks. On Saturday, August 17th, feel the thrill of WWE Live with the Universal Champion.
The Age of Rollins is here!
And we are going to burn it down!
CSAT Rollins-Kalibah Bear and Corbin for the Universal Championship, plus Braun Sturman battles Bobby Lashley one-on-one. It's WWE Live at Grand Forks on Saturday, August 17th. Tickets are available.
Good evening and welcome to beautiful downtown Grand Forks, North Dakota, and the Jobs Development Authority. We begin with a roll call.
Weigel.
Here.
Dockler.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Mock.
Here.
Marshall.
Sandy.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Brown. We have four.
Very good. And the first item that we have on the agenda this evening is hold the public hearing and take action on the Flexpace application for Ironhide Equipment Inc.
We have a very long agenda tonight, so I'm just going to turn it right over to Brandon Baumback to speak to this.
Very good. Thank you, Meredith, members of the JDA. Thanks for hearing this application on behalf of Ironhide Equipment. They're a full-service, compact, and heavy equipment dealership primarily representing Bobcat and Doosan. Ironhide had been in Grand Forks or got started in March 2000 and has since expanded into Devil's Lake, Williston, and Bemidji. They have outgrown their current location on Gateway Avenue and are building a 24,000-square-foot building on a seven-acre plot southwest corner of the intersection of I-29 and 32nd Avenue. Traditionally, it's been the practice of the JDA to support primary sector opportunities or those businesses that derive the majority of their sales from beyond our trade region. And to stay true to that practice, the application in front of you tonight requests an interest-rate buy-down on only the primary sector portion of that business. Exactly, it's asking to apply the buy-down to 6,000 square feet that supports enterprise-wide activities. So this portion of the building will office HR professionals, accountants, et cetera, that support all branches of the Ironhide brand. Summarize, the total project is expected to require an investment of $5.8 million, but the request in front of you is for an interest-rate buy-down on $1.45 million of the project. To do this, the JDA is asked to provide a loan of $107,692 to leverage $200,000 from the Bank of North Dakota. It'll buy their interest rate down from 4.65% to 1%. The loan-to-value on the project's healthy at 65%, and it's secured by both a second mortgage on the property and personal guarantees. Tonight, we're seeking the approval from the JDA on that loan amount. I'm happy to stand for any questions at this time.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Baumback. And with that, we'll open the public hearing on item 2.1. Does anyone wish to speak on the Flexpace application for Ironhide Equipment, Inc.? With that, we'll close the public hearing and looking for questions, comments. We have a motion from Mr. Weigel, and a second from Mr. Vean. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. Mr. Baumback, item 2.2. Ms. Richards, thank you. Item 2.2, lease renewal and modification request, Kitsona and Corporate Center, Inc.
Yes, good evening. Kitsona is one of two of the Corporate Center's retail tenants. This is Corporate Center, Inc. at 402 DeMers. You may recall last month Ann Love, who was our other retail tenant in that facility, came forward with a request to defer basically half of their rent and CAM charges. This body approved that request. That was in recognition of the street reconstruction project on DeMers and the negative impact that they expect that to have on their business due to loss of access during what should be their most profitable season. The request from Kitsona is somewhat similar in that it references that same concern. Kitsona has also had some financial difficulties through basically growing too far, too fast is the term that they've used. They've been very candid, but they've also requested a significant reduction in the amount that they want to pay. So the request before you is to renew their lease for a 12-month period. The base rate of 702 a square foot and the CAM charges of 560 a square foot would be retained. However, they would pay only $2,000 a month, and the balance would be deferred. The coming year's deferral would be attached to the amount that they're already in arrears, and then a repayment or workout plan would be part of either their renewal or expiration of the lease in a year's time. This was heard at the Growth Fund Committee on June 17th, and their recommendation was to approve, as I just stated.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Richards. And with that, we'll open a public hearing on item 2.2. Does anyone wish to speak on the lease renewal and modification request for Kitsona? Anyone wish to speak? Hearing no one. Looking to JDA members for questions. We have a motion to approve for Mr. Sandy, and a second for Mr. Weigel. The motion on the floor. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. Ms. Richards, item 2.3, purchase offer and interim lease extension for Center, Inc.
Yes, I've been before this group several times to discuss the future of 201 South Fourth. Your staff report goes into a lot of the background on this, but the upshot is Center has been a tenant in this building for quite some time, since 2002. We're looking for a way to keep them in that building, but at a more market-oriented structure, either through a sale or a lease. We're now looking at an opportunity for them to purchase the building. This was brought through Growth Fund Committee as a condo sale in March. However, that was tabled when it brought to the JDA. We've since gone back to a more conventional sale process that looks at a purchase by Center with the affirmation of maintaining the space that is currently occupied by social detox at the same rate. That has been a concern throughout this process to be fair to Center and also be fair to social detox, which occupies approximately 8% of that building. So the action before you tonight is twofold. First, extend Center's existing lease through the end of the year to allow the sale to close, and then approve the sale terms that are laid out in your staff report. As discussed at Growth Fund Committee, there was the desire to... The trade-off is the longer the very generous lease with social detox is, the lower the purchase price that Center is willing to give. The recommendation coming out of Growth Fund Committee was to go with a $690,000 purchase price with a 15-year lease at $1 a year with the extensions that are outlined in your staff report. I also want to note that all of this action by the JDA would be contingent on concurrence by Center's board of both the lease and sale terms, and then by city council of the terms of social detox as extended lease.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Richards. And with that, we'll open a public hearing on item 2.3, the purchase offer and interim lease extension for Center, Inc. Does anyone wish to speak on item 2.3? Hearing no one interested in speaking. Looking to the JDA members. We have a motion from Ms. Dockler, and a second from Ms. Mock. Any further questions or comments? Mr. Sandy.
So $30,000 discount is worth 15 years at $1 a year?
Well, we ran a number of present value scenarios, you know, what is the appropriate discount rate and what is the appropriate market rate. Chris Wolf, as you may recall, mentioned some concerns about that when we discussed this at Growth Fund Committee. Andy Conlin from my office had run numerous calculations. He shared those with Mr. Wolf, and he was, well, as far as I know, he didn't have any comments other than he was fine with the recommendation that was arrived at at Growth Fund Committee. I don't know if I answered your question. I said a lot of words there.
Kind of roundabout. If $30,000 is worth 15 years, why don't we just give them the building and take the next 350 years for free?
Well, I don't have a good answer for that, but I do know that we have been trying to get some sort of long-term arrangement worked out for quite some time.
It would be much better for us to do that.
Well, we're, as staff, we are eager to get out of the business of managing this property, so it's been a bit of a process to get to the point where we are today.
Okay. Are the folks at Public Health okay with this?
Ms. Swanson was at the Growth Fund Committee meeting, and she's seen this, discussed it with city attorney's office staff just before the meeting, and everybody seems okay with moving forward with this.
Very good. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Move on to item 2.4, the Economic Development Association Revolving Loan Fund Plan Interim Amendments. Ms. Richards.
We have a couple of, I like to think of them as basically housekeeping items. We have an EDA revolving loan fund plan that is due for an update every five years with that next update due next fall. As was noted by our EDA rep when we turned in our last semi-annual report, since EDA has gone to a risk-based evaluation system, we are receiving an artificially low score by never having adopted a cost-per-job target in our EDA plan. So what that rep has recommended is that we just establish an interim target, which is the $20,000 per job based on the overall history of the performance of the revolving loan fund. This will allow us to easily meet that goal and get a good score. When we redo, overhaul, update our plan next fall, we can look at that a little more critically in terms of what a legitimate target should be. This is basically just a way to keep us from getting a bad score over the next years of two reporting periods of semi-annual reports before we get a new plan adopted. The second item is even more mundane. Our plan says that before we submit our semi-annual report to EDA, it will be approved by the JDA. There really is no approval necessary. It's a historical report, so as a body, you have no ability to really change those numbers. But since these come typically mid-year, we often have a five-mondays situation. The upshot is to bring it to JDA, we either have to hold special meetings, or it gives a really short time period to finance staff to prepare this report. So rather than asking the JDA to approve submission, we're stating that staff will submit it administratively and then present it to the JDA at their next meeting.
Very good.
And that's that.
Thank you. And with that, we'll open a public hearing on item 2.4, the EDA RLF Plan Interim Amendments. Does anyone wish to speak at item 2.4? Hearing no interest there. We'll close the public hearing and look to JDA members for questions, comments, or a motion. We have a motion from Mr. Vean, and from Mr. Weigel, a second. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item 2.5, Regional Market Capture Committee Partnership Funding Request. Mr. Phelan.
Mr. Weber and members of the Jobs Development Authority. We had this issue addressed at the Growth Fund Committee. There was a unanimous vote to move forward with the city's contribution of $50,000 over two years. In FY 2019, would be $25,000, and then in FY 2020 would be our additional $25,000. With me this evening, we also have some of our community partners. We have the Chamber, which has been leading this initiative. Mr. Wilford is here on behalf of the Chamber, and then also the two co-chairs, Mr. Wallack and Mr. Crary are here, who are co-chairing this market capture committee. Also, Mr. Lund is here on behalf of the EDC. Ms. Riggs from the CBB could not be here, and I just want to mention one last partner, which is the East Grand Forks EDA. And Mr. Gordy is also a partner. So we have lots of partners on this, as detailed in that. We are the highest contributing partner, but we probably have the most to gain, obviously, as part of this. So, number one, this is an area where we used to take for granted, like a lot of things here, you know, whether it was workforce or other things. Truly, this is really important to grow our economy, diversify what goes on in our community, and provide for quality of life choices. So we know that we're in a competitive environment with other communities, and this is just one more component part where people choose to live and play and stay and all those other kinds of things. So it's critically important as part of our strategic plan. And I think when the Herald did a recent poll, if it wasn't number one, I think it was number two, retail concerns. And so I think we've, the community's concerned about that. The city of Grand Forks, we generally have to help with leadership in many areas, and this is one more area to move forward with. Mr. Wilford, in the city of Grand Forks, on behalf of the Chamber and the city, we got involved in this with the CBB, you know, several years ago. And obviously, in 2011, I think was the last time, the environment has changed quite significantly, as we all know. So this is a, it's a different version of what we did before. This is more trying to capture some data analytics, get some knowledge of what's going on in our marketplace here, and then how do we react to it in a thoughtful and strategic way as we move forward? So with that, we have all of our partners have all, number one, said this is an important matter, and more importantly, they've contributed some funding towards this. And I think really what we're here is to grow our offerings, grow our tax base, to grow our competitiveness, and not only in our region, but so make sure that we remain competitive throughout the larger region in this really competitive environment that we're in. As we move forward, I would suspect after today, after this last $50,000 contribution, this committee will move forward. The agreement right now that's attached from Buxton Company, it has the signatories of the city of Grand Forks. Ultimately, it won't be the city of Grand Forks. It will be the Chamber will be the signers of this, of the agreement, just for the record. We will be a financial contributor to it and a partner on this. And Mr. Weber, you've been a key component partner in part of the discussions and kind of shaping the environment to where we are today. And one of the last pieces there is going to be, I mentioned the Buxton Company, that's going to do a lot of the analytics. Praxis is going to do some of the, kind of some of the interpretation, some of the move the way ahead strategy as we move forward. And I think at some point, once we have the study, we have the analytics, we have the strategic action plan. Mr. Weber's talked about how are we going to staff this and implement it. So there's one thing of, you know, doing studies, it's where do you lead to? And so I don't think we're at that last stage of how do all the community partners come together and help move forward with the implementation, whether that's with consulting, additional consulting, whether that's with existing staff, or even additional resources that we may need with staffing. I don't think we know all those answers, but I think we have all commitment from all the different entities that we not only need to look at it, we need to seek action from that. So that's probably the next component part. Hopefully, in the next couple months, we can come up with the action plan, then come back here to say, here's how we're going to really take some strategic initiatives and make an action plan with that. With that, I mentioned all of our partners are here to answer any questions or to respond to anything, but with that, Mr. Weber, I would stand for any questions along with our partners.
Very good. Thank you. Now, there's a couple issues here. The agenda is set up so that it's calling for a public hearing. I don't know that this would normally be necessary, but we'll follow the agenda and open a public hearing at this time if anyone wishes to speak. Similarly, another matter, I don't believe that this would have technically required coming to the JDA. This would have been in your purview, but again, in the interest of transparency, this is being brought to the JDA. So with that, is there anyone who wishes to speak on this matter? With that, we'll close the public hearing and look to JDA members for any conversation. Ms. Mock, please.
We know that retail is potentially going through quite a few changes, not just here, but also nationally. Do they have a particular way of looking at that, that they've discussed for this study going forward?
I'll add, Mr. Wilford, he's probably, he's been probably in most contacts with, as he comes up, I think the important part is, we do have an engaged, if you look at Grant City's mall, which is owned by, I think it's called Land of Hope LLC. We also had owner representatives from GK Development that owns the Columbia Mall. Both malls are looking for redevelopment opportunities, as has been reported by the Grand Forks Herald. So I think that's important, even as part of this study. We did do some outreach. A group went to Chicagoland area and engaged with GK Development. And what we heard is that they understand retail landscape has changed, they need to redevelop the mall, they plan to move forward with plans. They were here last week to hear from it, and I think it went really, really well. And the community should know that they're really engaged, they know something needs to be done. They felt the positive vibes in the community, and I think they sent that back to Chicago, that they need to move forward. Because we can invest a lot of public money, but if the private sector isn't willing to help lead, because ultimately, that's what we're trying to do. But we've heard that all across the line, is that this isn't trying to find, you know, some box that can come to Grand Forks. This is really trying to identify what's happening in our market, and then how do we make some moves? So it's a different paradigm. And then because the Chamber's going to be a part of this Buxton, hold the Buxton study, they'll have some ability to share that information. So our private sector is smarter. And really, what we're trying to do, if you ask the city of Grand Forks, whether it's the city of Grand Forks or the JDA, we're just trying to facilitate the private sector to be smarter and to help us out as a larger community. So with that, I defer any to Mr. Wilford.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Mr. Wilford, thank you for your leadership on this matter, and please go ahead.
The only point I would add is, you know, we'll be looking at experiences, retail services. What are those opportunities that will work in our market? And, you know, what are those adaptive uses, some of our empty space? This will give us some of that information, hopefully fill in some of those gaps.
And then that might in turn give them the tools to ask for redevelopment if they need it, or whatever they might need to...
Exactly.
A focus on growing local business first, and then whatever is necessary.
Well, as the Chamber, that would be our priority.
Yes.
Thank you for recognizing that.
Mr. Sandy.
Mr. Wilford, what is the Chamber's role in trying to attract new retail stores to Grand Forks?
Back in 2010, 11, 12, you know, we had a list that was generated in the previous Buxton report, and we sent out letters, the mayor and myself, we signed a letter inviting those 51 companies that were identified as good matches. That time, we had 17 of those companies locate here, and we'd made some follow-up efforts. Mr. Hoover was on the city's staff at that time, and we had some success at that time. And since then, we've not had, that is one of our top priorities. I mean, now, if you take a look at our current environment, you know, looking at what are those opportunities is certainly on our radar, again, as an organization.
Sure. So you're going to, you're going to be doing similar things with the new data?
It'll be a little different type of data. It'll be, you know, it'll be the geofencing data, so you'll be really looking at what events, what experiences don't we have? What are our customers going to do in other communities versus just here, you know? So it won't identify, what are those 30 businesses that would work, that we would potentially recruit? Although we are going to take a look at what are some of the regional businesses that would make sense to recruit to our community? And then also, what are some opportunities for existing businesses? What could they put in their business that would help?
Sure.
That maybe they have in Fargo or Minneapolis that would work in our market based on the input that we get from that data. We'll know if somebody's going to the Twin Cities to a specific type of experience, why can't we have that experience here? We've got some great entrepreneurs here, we have some great existing business people who could maybe put something like that in their business. So our intent would be to get that information to the local business community first, and hopefully they can respond to some of that information.
Great. Thank you for taking the leadership role. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Vean.
Barry, that information will be available to all businesses in the community, right?
Yes, yeah. The information, 99% of it will be public. There will be part of the geofencing, where we geofence competitors like the Alara Center and a couple of those that we probably won't want the Fargo folks to see specifically. That'll be for some of our specific venues, and will be, some of that will be held proprietary because obviously, we don't want to give them our competitive data. But everything else, you know, even last time, everything last time was public except for the list of 50 matches, because we didn't want someone else to basically look at that list of one of our competitor's cities and recruit those.
Yeah, I've been a big fan of public-private partnerships. Oftentimes, that's with one builder, developer, whatever, for the benefit of the entire community. This seems to be for the benefit of all businesses in the community, and it's a great partnership to have.
Yeah, and the geofencing data we'll share with anybody who wants it. Typically, we, you know, come over to the Chamber office, and we'll show it to you, we'll show you how to interpret it and read it. We spent a lot of one-on-one time last time we had this similar type data, so.
It's wonderful to see the community coming together in this collaborative way, again, to address concerns about matters affecting our sales tax revenue. So you mentioned the city is one of the...
That is the win-win.
...main beneficiaries, yes. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilford. And any further questions, comments? Otherwise, we have a motion from Mr. Vean. Looking for a second. Got a second from Ms. Mock. Any, with the motion on the floor, any further questions? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. And we'll move to item 2.6. The agenda signifies affirmation of JDA officers will actually be asking for an election of officers. Ms. Richards.
Correct. City Code states that the JDA shall annually elect chair, vice chair, and secretary treasurer. This was done last July, and so it is time to hold another election. At that point in 2018, Mr. Weber, you were of course elected chair, Mr. Vean was vice chair, and Mr. Sandy was secretary treasurer. So on advice of city attorney, we need to have nominations for each office and a vote thereafter.
Very good. So first step in that would be looking for a nomination for chair, the Jobs Development Authority. Mr. Vean?
I'll nominate Mr. Weber for chair.
Thank you, sir. Looking for a possible second.
I'll second that nomination.
All right.
Is there time for discussion?
Yes, with the motion on the floor, questions, comments?
I would consider someone else that could run a faster meeting, but since you're doing so well tonight, I'm right on board with you.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. We're now looking for a motion for, or nomination for a vice chair.
Nominate Mr. Vean.
Looking for a possible second for motion that's on the floor. Ms. Mock, seconds. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. And then we need a nomination for secretary treasurer.
I nominate Danny Weigel.
Very good.
I'll nominate.
We have a second from Mr. Vean. Any further questions or comments?
Can I also nominate Dana Sandy?
Come on.
I'll withdraw my motion.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further questions? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Which brings us around to a final item on the JDA agenda this evening, 2.7. I believe this is information-only. Mr. Phelan.
It is.
The GF Herald, Grand Forks Herald Building Master Planning Update.
Just as information... Just as information, Mr. Weber and members of the Jobs Development Authority. Obviously, we all know that we purchased the building, we did do an RFQ to move forward with master planning and design services. So that RFQ went out, there were interviews that took place. The committee chose to move forward with JLG as the highest-ranked firm. We're in the process of negotiating a master planning agreement that I think will be in at around $30,000, to move forward to refine some of these concepts that we have with all of our partners. And from there, we would go to final design. So I would anticipate sometime, probably in early September, we'd be back to the JDA, and obviously, there'd be lots of meetings, there'd be meetings before, in between there, with a final concept that we'd want to move forward to final design. And that would have all the final square footages, and how we're going to pay for all this, final cost estimate as we move forward. So we have all of our partners on board, they're excited about it, and I think when the Herald building is all said and done, it's going to be quite a space that we're going to have, that's going to just add to all the momentum that we have in the downtown area. So I just wanted to give you a heads-up that we're moving forward, master planning. It will include all of our partners, and Mr. Weber also has been participating as your Chair of both the Growth Fund and the JDA. So that's all that I have.
Very good, thanks for that update, Mr. Vean. Any questions or comments from Mr. Vean? Hearing none, looking for a motion to adjourn. Mr. Weigel, motions, Ms. Dockler, seconds, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to beautiful downtown Grand Forks. This is the Grand Forks City Council meeting for Monday, July 1st, under Item 1, General Business 1.1, welcome to roll call.
Okay, Weigel.
Here.
Dockler.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Mock.
Here.
Marshall.
Sandy.
Here.
And Vean.
Here.
We have a core.
Great, the council will lead us, and the pledge will lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under Item 1.1, Mayor's announcements. I do have one announcement. Chief Lorenz, could join me at the podium? Chief, you've been busy.
I've just been busy.
This is a very important recognition today, and not only important, it's very impressive. I have a letter here from Ms. Tanya Hoover, the Superintendent of the National Fire Academy of the U.S. Fire Administration. It says, "Mr. Vean, please accept my sincere thanks for your support of Gary Lorenz during his participation in the U.S. Fire Administration's National Fire Academy's Executive Fire Officer Program. Chief Lorenz has now successfully completed the Executive Fire Officer Program and the required applied research. On behalf of the NFA, the enclosed EFOP certificate has been forwarded to you for formal presentation to this dedicated member of your department." So again, we have a very fine certificate from the National Fire Academy, showing that you, Mr. Chief Lorenz, have completed the Executive Fire Officer Program. Congratulations, very impressive certificate.
Thank you.
The last thing I'd like to say is, it's people like you showing leadership like that, which really make our city great, right? And so I personally really appreciate what you've done, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Would you like to say some words?
I guess I'm not sure what to say. The program itself, for those that don't know, it's a program through the National Fire Academy, which is in Emma'sburg, Maryland. It consisted of a four-year curriculum, where you went to the Fire Academy once a year for two weeks, were those classes during that time, and then upon return, you had to do an applied research project based on a problem within your organization. And this past, this past winter, I spent most of my Saturdays and Sundays sitting in my office writing the paper. So it was quite a journey, but it was, I think it was very valuable, and a lot, I learned a lot out there, and I hope I can utilize some of what I learned for the city of Grand Forks. And I appreciate the city supporting me during the endeavor.
Thank you again, Chief, very impressive. Under Item 2, Awards Presentations Appointments of Proclamations, 2.1.
I have a proclamation, the American Legion Day, June 29th, 2019.
So June 29th, 2019, is the American Legion Day. I have a proclamation by the mayor. Whereas, the American Legion was chartered by Congress in 1919 on September 16th, as a wartime veterans' organization, based on the four pillars of veterans' affairs and rehabilitation, national security, Americanism, and children and youth. And whereas, the American Legion administers a variety of programs that support the four pillars and benefit our nation's veterans, its service members, their families, and the youth of America and its citizens. And whereas, the 2019 observance of American Legion Day provides an opportunity to recognize legionnaires in our community for their many contributions to our community. Now therefore, I, Michael Brown, Mayor of Grand Forks, North Dakota, do hereby proclaim June 29th, 29th, 2019 as the American Legion Day in Grand Forks, and call on its citizens to join in its recognition and celebration. Signed, Mayor Brown. So Item 2.2?
Welcoming Community Roadmap Update.
Ms. David, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, council members, for the chance to offer a brief update on the roadmap. When we adopted the five-year strategic plan last fall, and started implementation in January, the decision was made to provide reports every six months, which would give, in part, an opportunity for you all to see how the project is going, as well as to provide the steering committee and all of the stakeholders a chance to see where they're at, and potentially redirect, or add things, or change things, based on what we're finding out. So all of you should have a report in front of you with the, just the basics on what's been happening over the last six months. The project was implemented in January, my position started in mid-February. So once we hit June 30th, we were at the six-month point. A significant portion of the time has just been spent trying to establish the process for what this is going to look like as we move into the implementation stage. So some of that has been a process for keeping up the momentum that was established early on with the working groups, when we had nearly 80 people who developed the project together. So at this point, we are convening action groups every six months to check in with all of our stakeholders, and allow them that chance to come together and further their work. We also have expanded our steering committee, taking on a couple of new members from Altru Health System. And we have a new leaders group that is launching as well, which includes executive-level representation from the city, the county, Altru, Grand Forks Region Economic Development, University of North Dakota, and Grand Forks Public Schools. Those six will be represented at the leaders group level. Also, a significant amount of stakeholder reach in the first six months. Many of you were part of that, as I had individual conversations with each of you. And then the development of a communications process to share the work that's going on, and being able to contribute to furthering that work in that way. So the staffing of the Welcoming Community Roadmap has been done through, again, my part-time position, which is funded through the city administrator's budget from February until December, that's 24 hours a week. And then there are also two summer interns who are supporting that work, the summer, who have really helped make some significant progress in this, and have come up with some really great ideas, and have helped to implement them. Communication updates. The GF welcomes hashtag started in March. Since then, there have been nearly 100,000 impressions of that, just through the city social media alone. That does not even count the amount of the shares and all of the activity that happens once people share posts, as well as posts that are developed by others. So it's nearly 100,000 impressions just with city alone, as well as 2,600 engagements with those posts. The new action updates newsletter, which has been around now for a couple of months, and that right now is running at a double the typical standard for government newsletters for open rates, and the number of subscribers has increased significantly since we started that in May. We've also been doing a number of presentations locally, regionally, and nationally, as well as new tabling at various events. Our two summer interns are getting ready to have a presence at the Suratoma 4th of July activities, and are going to be providing opportunities for kids to engage with it in that way as well. And a new website that will allow you to track progress on each of the initiatives that we hope to be able to launch next week, and we'll be sharing that with all of you once it's ready. The initiatives themselves, we have a number of things in process, and when we met with all of the action groups, that is what we learned, basically, is that there's a lot, that a lot of people are doing, a lot of meetings, a lot of conversations, a lot of research that's going into play. We have five initiatives that are complete, two that are about half an inch away from being complete, and then 20 total that are in progress, with more that are going to be launching in the second half of this year. And in all, it was about 50 stakeholders who participated in these check-ins, as we convened those groups in the last month. And when there were challenges, if stakeholders said that they didn't make quite as much progress on any of them as they wanted to, it was typically because of organizational capacity. But in most cases, it's, things are moving forward quite nicely. We also conducted a survey of our stakeholders to see what it is that they need from us, and how we can help champion each other's work, and found some good findings there, that it was really helping to foster collaborations, their involvement with the roadmap has helped them to connect with other agencies. 75% of them said that they had been thinking about certain actions before, and being involved with the roadmap helped to propel them to actually implement them. And 82% said that it helped them to implement new things that they would not have done otherwise. The Cooking Up Cultures event that was held recently in May and June, four weeks through a partnership with some downtown restaurants. With that, we were able to do quite a bit of assessment, some of them, we could see the economic impact of having those events, and some cultural. So for the economic impact, it was an average of 19% increase in sales for the restaurants on those particular evenings, up to double what they would typically see. And we also surveyed the people who were attending those events and participating, and 16% of them were first-time patrons, so it was getting new people to restaurants, particularly in a time where there is construction that is impacting their bottom line. So we're getting new people to these restaurants. In one case, it was nearly 40% of the people who had come out were new to that particular restaurant. The local cooks were also provided a stipend during this event. And with the assessment that we did of people before they had their meal, and after they had opportunities to eat, and connect with the local cook, and talk about that person's home country, for instance, their agreement with the fact that they could engage in activities that allowed them to connect with different cultures was raised significantly through that event. So that was a very big success, and a number of groups came together to make that happen. The next steps over the coming six months, in some cases, it's involving communications pieces, doing more presentations to different groups. We have a new brochure that we're developing, new promotional items to be able to spread the word, and enhance branding, so that partners in the community will be able to display that particular logo too, to say that they are one of the agencies that are working on this project. And also, increased outreach and partnerships that are being planned with the University of North Dakota, increased outreach with the Grand Forks County, and Grand Forks Air Force Base. In addition, in the next six months, there'll be a fair amount of work using the Welcoming Project, leveraging that to be able to push forward some other major community initiatives. The Census Complete Count Committee is underway, and being able to make sure that we're counting traditionally unaccounted populations is going to have a big impact on the city, and so we're making sure that we're using the work of Welcoming and the connections that we have there. I'll be spending a good amount of time on that piece. As well as the new workforce master plan, we know that we need workers here in Grand Forks, and Welcoming can really help to push that initiative forward as well. And also, the call to action on addiction and substance abuse will be another effort that we'll be supporting through the roadmap project. And next year then, 2020, will include the current activities plus eight additional new city-led initiatives, and then there are eight to-be-determined initiatives that we'll be working with partners to determine. And finally, all of you have received a couple of tattoos, along with your report here today. We're starting a new effort to have, it's a social media effort, to demonstrate the power of Welcoming. So you are, we've had a few people agree already that they will tattoo themselves temporarily, and post pictures with the GF welcomes logo and the power of Welcoming. It does not matter the size of your muscles, as you can see, it'll work regardless, and it's a lot of fun. So we'll be doing that also at the 4th of July celebration. And yes, your picture can be there, if you're willing to add it to that. And that's everything. Any questions on the six-month report?
Any questions, Mr. Weber?
Thanks for being concise. You've been very busy, and there's a lot to cover in that short period of time here. The Cooking Up Culture event, fantastic event, I was able to make it to at least a couple of those. Is there any plans for that to go on beyond the Welcoming Communities' involvement? Are any of the restaurants planning on just continuing?
So that they can see how it went, and the decision will be made from there. The first round was a collaboration from Blue Weber with Downtown Development Association, and UND's nonprofit leadership, Capstone Class, who worked together to implement it as a pilot program. So now, it will be determined as to whether that will happen again. But all of the feedback was very, very positive from the various partners involved.
And could you also take a moment and tell us a little bit more about the workforce master plan, some of the specifics of that?
Sure. Well, and that's something that's going to be happening in the next stages, and so, I don't know, Barry, if you want to talk about that.
We had 100 HR directors meet last week, and we're having one two weeks ago, and the EDC and the Chamber have historic rapport on that one, so we're pretty good at that plan.
And so I've offered to figure out how we use Welcoming to.
All right.
Continue that.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Sandy.
Of course, of course. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, thank you, Ms. David, appreciate it. Moving right along.
Okay, 3.1, Public Hearing and Securing of Ordinances Relating to Modification of Class 8.2 and 8.3 Alcoholic Beverage License for the Ralph Engelstadt Arena and Alera Center.
We've spent a considerable amount of time talking about the ordinances. The city attorney has provided an updated version of the ordinance for everyone's review. Hopefully, everyone's had a chance to read it. This is a public hearing, so we'll open the public hearing for Item 3.1. If there's anyone interested in discussing 3.1, please come to the podium. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Comments, Mr. Weigel?
I'll move approval. I would just ask that, I believe, an email from Mr. Swanson indicated that there is, we could place an amendment that either event center could come forward and ask for permission to host an event.
I believe, Mr. Weigel, in the updated version of the ordinance, under Section 1, Number 1, Part B, they've added the sentence at the Chester Fitz Auditorium and the Empire Theatre, no, I'm sorry, Item Number 2. Let me see, where is it? Thank you. C, where is it? C, B, I'm looking at the wrong version, that's my problem.
Mr. Sandy?
Go ahead.
Mr. Sandy, yeah, members of council, so Mr. Swanson attached a revised ordinance for your consideration if you choose to amend what was previously passed, and he added C under Section 1, "At such other locations as approved by the city council for approved events where the license holder is..." Am I looking at the...
Promoting a sporting or entertainment event.
Yes.
Yep. So I think he's already done that, Mr. Weigle.
In that case, I'll move approval.
Great. Moved by Weigle, seconded by Weber. Sorry, first, we need to approve the amended, the amendment.
Yeah, motion to amend the ordinance and then approve.
And then, okay, so was yours a motion to approve the amendment? Thank you, and Mr. Weber?
Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of amending the amendment? The ordinance, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. So is there a motion to approve the ordinance? Moved by Weigle, seconded again by Weber. Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Action items, 4.1. Oh, all action items. Who would like action items pulled tonight? I'll pull 4.1. Any other action items? Is there a motion to recuse Ms. Mock and Mr. Veen on item 411?
411, yes.
411, is there a move by Weigle? Is there a second by Weber? All those in favor of recusal signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. So we're going to pull item 41. Any other items for to be pulled? Seeing none, that leaves 42, 43, 44, 45, 46, 47, 48, 49, 410, 411, and 412. Mr. Weber moves approval, seconded by Dockler. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 4.1.
Public Arts Commission, Public Artwork Agreement for the Northern Rose Sculpture.
Good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy, members of the council. Tonight, you should have in your packets two specific documents related to the PAC Northern Rose Project. It's been discussed at a few council meetings, a committee, the whole. The Lera Center Commission has taken a look at it. The city has received a letter of support from the Canet Inns. Staff, along with PAC, has been working with the city attorney's office over the course of the past several weeks to finalize the two documents that you have in front of you. Again, the first agreement is entitled Agreement for the Installation of Public and Public Display of Artwork on City-Owned Property. So this is the Northern Rose Project, again, that we've been talking about. Within the agreement, as highlighted in the staff report, there are several bullet points that, again, staff and the city attorney's office has worked on over time to get our arms around what this sculpture-specific agreement is supposed to be, and as we discussed at a past few council meetings, that at some point, staff will also be bringing back the overall memorandum of understanding that we initially drafted back in 2014. So again, this agreement that you have in front of you tonight is specifically for the Northern Rose Project. Mr. Swanson also drafted the second document that you have in your packets. It's a memorandum of understanding between the city and the Canet Inns. Due to the design of the foundation that the sculpture will be resting on, it looks like two parking stalls will have to be removed in order to accommodate the overall area that the sculpture will sit in. I've personally had messages from the Canet Inn. They're pretty excited about the project itself with the letter of support, as well as acknowledgement of being able to remove two of the parking stalls. So with that, I guess we do have some PAC members that are here, and I guess I would open it up to the council with any specific questions you may have regarding the agreement. The engineers that have been hired, AE2S, are still currently working on the design elements of the foundation. There's still some work that needs to go into it to determine the overall structural stability and some other engineering-related issues that I'm probably not qualified to get into. So with that, I would open it up to any specific questions you might have for myself or the PAC members that are here this evening.
Any comments or questions for Mr. Gangler? I did notice a typo in the PAC document under termination of agreement. Letter A, damages should be damaged. Either way, it's, somebody will pick that up between now and whenever we execute this. Any other, anybody have any thoughts, questions, opinions on the public art? No? Ms. Mock?
So, going forward, are we planning to have like an application process that people can apply for on an annual basis? Are we planning to wait until a project like this comes forward and then deal with that group or PAC again specifically on a location and a particular piece of artwork? Is there kind of a plan for how to manage this going forward?
You know, at this point, staff doesn't have a specific plan that has been adopted relative to, you know, who's next in line, so to speak, or that process, but I think that's definitely something we need to discuss as it relates to the memorandum of understanding and just in general, because what has been approved in the past in terms of allocating, you know, portions of the dedication funds doesn't necessarily say PAC as a group, it just refers to the use for public art infrastructure. So those are, I think, some of the more important things that we need to really iron out as we move forward.
Mr. Gangler, is there a reason that the agreement is only 25 years?
I think that was just a timeframe that was discussed between PAC and staff and the attorney's office. I think 25 years is sometimes referred to as sort of the lifespan of maybe a given sculpture. So 25 years was ultimately what was agreed to, just in our talks with Mr. Swanson and PAC members. I don't think there's anything necessarily magic about 25 years versus 50 versus less, but that's just the timeframe that was agreed to.
The agreement is pretty cut and dried, then in 25 years, PAC has to disassemble it and take it and restore the property to its original state.
Right. The way it's drafted, after the 25 years, if there's no cause to remove it prior to that time, then PAC would be responsible. There's other clauses, as you read, that if it becomes in disrepair, dilapidated, damaged for whatever reasons, there's a 90-day notice to PAC to repair or remove the structure. There's also, under, on page three, under Paragraph 5, termination of the agreement, there's also a 180-day period to where either party, for whatever reasons other than the sculpture is damaged and physically shouldn't remain, that either party can provide notice of removal of the art after 180 days. But those are all things that obviously will stand the test of time, whether or not those would be executed or not.
I had one thought that, what if 23 years from now, everyone in our community loves that statue? They think it's the greatest, they're having parades around it, we do our Fourth of July fireworks there, people selfie, it's all around the world, people are wishing they could see that, but then we were required to make them take it.
I would hope, in absence of any other language in the agreement right now, I would hope that future councils would have that discretion to amend the agreement, to extend or otherwise.
But what if they somehow, it's so great, that they can't wait to take it somewhere else to downtown Chicago because Chicago's going to pay them lots of money to do that? Wouldn't we want to have some sort of, something that says, if we want to keep it, we keep it? I don't know, Ms. Mock?
Could we just add that it could be renewed at that 25-year mark or terminated at that 25-year mark? So if everyone likes it, they can just renew for another length of time?
I would think in the normal course of any agreement, I would think that that could be crafted within that. I would defer to the city attorney's office, but that is pretty common in most agreements that there is a right of renewal.
Mr. Workup?
Mr. Sandy, Mr. Gangler, members of the council. As I read the agreement, I don't know that the city at this point has the opportunity unilaterally to extend the term of the agreement. So if your scenario were to come true and they really wanted to go somewhere else, I don't think the city would have the ability to require it to stay here. So in order to address your concern, I think some minor edits would be necessary to incorporate or accommodate that concern. And those could be done.
Yeah, unless others object, I think, I think people are really going to like not only this piece of, our first piece of public art in this that we're working with PAC on, but I think they're really going to enjoy all of them. I'm hoping we become known as the city with lots of public art, and I don't want it walking away from our community after we've worked so hard to get it here. Yes, Ms. Mock?
It seems like this is a substantial piece of art, and we're also putting a lot into a concrete base to support it. So I would think that both PAC and the city, provided, you know, nothing unfortunate happens, would want to not only have it for 25 years, but perhaps renew that into the future. It's not small or light by the engineering agreements, so.
So, would you, yes, Ms. Mock? Thoughts?
I guess with perhaps some counsel from the city attorney, is there a way to make a motion to amend, to at least offer a renewal at that 25-year mark for PAC and the city to consider?
Mr. Workup?
Ms. Mock, I believe we could make the modifications. I'd rather not make them here on the floor, but I think I understand the concerns that the council has raised. We could make those modifications, and I don't know, Mr. Gangler, if you're looking for final approval tonight, or if you would be amenable to making the changes with our office and then present it to council again for final approval. Either way would be acceptable to our office if you wanted us to simply incorporate those ideas, and with the help of Mr. Gangler, we can do that. If you wanted to approve subject to that change, or if you want it to come back, we can certainly have it come back as well.
If I may, I think staff would recommend, you know, final approval tonight with those contingencies. We're getting into some critical timing now where PAC has to make their first payment to the artist in order to secure his time and labor. So again, staff would recommend final approval with the caveat that there be a language introduced for a possible extension of the agreement.
So you want to make that motion, Ms. Mock? Great. Is there a second? Second by Weber. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Veen, thoughts? No? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Gangler, for all your hard work on that item. Under item 5, information items, we have none. Item 6, citizens' requests, we have none, unless anyone wants to come up and speak their mind. Nope. Okay. Item 7, approval of minutes and bills.
Okay. Vendor list and engineer's estimate as presented.
Mr. Veen, move approval? Great. Second by Dockler. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And the minutes from March 18th, 2019.
Mr. Weigle says as-is, Dockler seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Out of eight, city administrator comments. Mr. Feeland, nothing tonight. Stifled, okay. Mayor and the council member comments. Mr. Weigle?
Just real quick, I got to represent Mayor Brown this weekend at the American Legion event, and it was great, and happy I was able to participate on behalf of the city and Mayor Brown.
Thanks for doing that. Ms. Dockler? Oh, Mr. Weber?
No.
Ms. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Veen? No. Thanks again, and congratulations again to Chief Lorenz for all of his hard work and being a very good and oddly enough, relatively typical example of the quality of the employees that we have in our, in our community. We should all be very proud of him and all of our city employees. You too, Marie. And everybody, please have a safe Fourth of July. So, happy Fourth. Mr. Veen quickly moves, we adjourn. Dockler second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We adjourn.